I want to call everybody to attention. We're going to go ahead and start the forum. Since there's only a handful of here. Amy Teal is here. Brian Burkhardt for mayor is here. Amy Teal is running for city council. And my name is Larry Farmer and I'm running for the Whitney School Board. So, please enjoy this stream and if you have any questions, pop them up. We'll try to get back to you. Brian, I'll let you go.
So, good evening, everybody. My name is Brian Burkhardt. I'm running for mayor. I just wanted to give something as far as information. I sat the other day and spoke with Zach. And I had a long conversation and he stated that he couldn't be here tonight, which he posted on his Facebook page stating that he had prior engagement with his kids for a sporting event. And so, just if he watches this, good luck. Hopefully, they do a good job. So, for those that don't know me, I was actually born here in 70. I was born at Lakewood Medical Center. Of course, the hospital where it is currently was built in 1968. And so, I was actually born in that hospital. My grandmother worked as a lab technician in the clinic. My grandfather also, he had a grocery store downtown. They had the antique store. My grandparents on my dad's side. Actually, the country club out here, Lakewood Country Club, back when it was functioning and opening and running in the 70s, they actually operated that. So, I learned to play golf at that location. So, my family history in Whitney has been a long time. Moved away, moved back. My daughter was four, so she actually started school here in pre-k. And so, I've been back here. She's 22, so I've been back here 18 years, 17, 18 years. And it made Whitney my home again. I currently work for CareFlight that provides 911 service for the county. My background, if you've seen my flyer, my large portion of my background is emergency services, fire, police, EMS. Was in, started in the fire service when I was 16 years old. So, I have got over, I'll be 55 this year. So, you can kind of do the math on that. EMS, I graduated high school, I went into that. Got my certification. And since I got out of high school, was in law enforcement for five years. Was a reserve police officer, I believe. So, a large majority of my background is emergency services. I was on the city council for two years. The job prior to coming to work for CareFlight was captain of operations for a department. I was over a $2 million budget. So, I was actually responsible for the daily operations of the department. So, with my background with emergency services, plus also my previous job with the fire department budgeting, I have an extensive background in emergency management. Also with critical infrastructure. I am actually certified through NERCE, which is a national certification for critical infrastructure, which basically what we do is, is we look at funding in case of an emergency. We look at how ways that we can help prevent disasters, whether it be natural or some form of terrorist incident. So, we go in and we evaluate city infrastructure. And those are one, some of the main things that I want to try to focus on is the city infrastructure, our water, our sewer. One of the things I know what we're really lacking is our emergency management. I know for citizens, how many of y'all, when they set the sirens off, can you actually hear the siren in your house? You can't, and it's because of placement. And that is something that's critical considering within the last 10 years, we've had two tornadoes that have gone directly west of town. And I actually worked both of those incidents. So, there are things as far as that goes with my skills, leadership, budget, you know, budget management, incident command, employee evaluations, because I was responsible for the employees with their evaluations. Regulatory and safety compliance. I worked in oil and gas for over 11 years. So, I've dealt with OSHA, EPA, railroad commission. Those are all things that I have actually focused on and dealt with in my previous job. My biggest thing is that I'm not going to make promises that I can't live up to. The things that I want to do are, as if you look at my flyer, research ways to lower taxes. That I promised that I'm going to lower taxes, no, I can't. Because there are five people that sit around that table that ultimately that is their decision. My vote only comes into play when it is a tie vote. Can I make recommendations on ways that we can lower those taxes? Yes, I can. Can I guarantee that that's going to happen? No, because there are five other people that sit around that table who make that decision. Explore traditional and innovative ways to enhance availability and quality of our water. You know, water is always a natural resource that we struggle, everybody struggles with every year. There are ways out there that we can actually capture water as other than drilling to try and help augment and supplement our water system. And there's grants out there for those things. Evaluate and improve our emergency management plan. By law, you know, there are things that are required that we have to do. A local emergency planning committee, you know, that is something that we have to have as a city and evaluate our emergency plans. Develop strategic plans to improve city services. You know, how can we improve our city services? Looking at budgeting, you know, what are we spending this money on? How much are we spending on vehicles? Are we getting the most for our money on the vehicles that we're purchasing? So, part of my previous job was at RAS purchases, in vehicle purchases. So, I know the processes that we need to go through to hopefully be able to purchase the right equipment, but save the city money when we do purchase that equipment. And then also promote economic development. There are things in a city, as a city, that we can do to promote economic development, but there's also things that as we bring those businesses in, those businesses can help fund certain projects. City beautification. You know, we work with those, with those businesses and we tell them, you come into the city, great, that's good, because we want you here. In return, we would like to see you help with park development, planting trees, doing those things. Work out a schedule with them to where they can come in and it's not funding coming from the city. It's from those businesses that want to come in, that are willing to help beautify the city, but also bring business into the city. So, there are so many different things that we can do as a city to try and better what we're doing as opposed to just sitting back and offering businesses, hey, come here, but we're not giving anything in return. So, again, my name is Brian Burkhardt. If anybody has any questions, please, yes, ma'am.
Rudy Reyna is watching the livestream and he has a question. How do you lower taxes when we're capped at 8.25%?
Again, right now, I can't, I can't explain that. I can't tell you how to lower it because I don't know what city services, what city, what things we're doing in the city right now that we can adjust the budget on to be able to help lower that tax to where we're not having to collect as much money to try and fund those projects.
Anybody else out there? No. Anybody from the audience have a question?
I, in speaking with you a while ago, and this is one of the things that I want to do. I think as a city, we need to focus on working with the schools. We need to focus on working with the county. I think we need to be more involved in those than what we currently are. You know, school board, emergency service districts, because we get a lot of our funding for the fire department through the emergency services districts. Fire department is a contract through the city that they get to set around every year. EMS, as far as on the fireside, they get paid per call. So, depending on the number of calls that they make throughout the year, that's funding that comes into the city as well. So, I think we need to work closely with those because those are income coming into the city that help fund those, those services. Our current EMS system, I think that's something that we really need to evaluate. It's a rough number of $550,000, something thousand dollars, I think, that the city's budgeted for, for EMS. And they, and according to their sheet, they were expecting an income of $140,000. Well, that's a $400,000 deficit of what we're paying for services versus what we're recouping to help that operate. So, I really think that there's things that we need to look at on how we're operating to be able to fund those.
Rudy has a second question. What are your thoughts on heads in bed taxes?
I will be honest, that is not something that I really researched or focused on. And so, that is something that I will have to get back. If he looks at my page, it's brian.burkhardt@email.com. If you will email me that question, I will research that information more and we'll get you an answer.
There you go.
Brian, what are your thoughts on the overall appearance of the city? City beautification, code and enforcement, those kind of things?
City beautification, that is a big one. And one of the things that the city services has cut, I understand that you were able to have your trees picked up by the trash company. Well, the problem is, is that that information hasn't really been relayed in a way that I think is effective for the city. I think that is something that we really need to research and look at because that is something to where you drive by and all you see is a big pile of lamps out by the road. And they sit there for months and months and months. I think that's something we need to focus on. I think also with the, with the businesses and bringing businesses in, that would help with the beautification of, of the city. What was the second part of your question?
Code enforcement?
The code enforcement? I do think that the city needs code enforcement. Do I think that these, that there was an overreach in how they were enforcing codes? I absolutely did. I think there is a way that things could be done more politically correct as opposed to you're in violation, here's a fine. It's education. You have to educate the public. Those codes are necessary. Those are things that need to be done. Those are things that we need. But I think there was an overreach when it was first implemented. And I think that that was allowed. And I think that's something that really needs to be looked into. You know, I know one of the big, one of the big things that we have heard about on Facebook is the sex gender registry and where people are living and those kinds of things. And that is, that is a concern. As a city, there are ordinances that we can implement. Right now, I do believe it's a residence within 2,000 feet and you can't order within 500 feet of a child safety zone. As a general law city, the city can actually establish and set ordinances to help try to protect our kids by increasing those distances. That is also, it's going to have to be researched. But that is something that I think as far as the city, to just protect our children, that's something that we really, really need to look at. I know there's other cities and taxes that have done that. So, we just really need to look and research and see what we can do to try and implement some of those ordinances.
I have a question. What about the vehicles for police, for the vehicles that are purchased by the city? What, how do you, what do you feel like is required and?
Steve, without going in and physically looking at the fleet and seeing where we are, that is another one of those on purchasing vehicles because there's programs that you can go through, there's vendors that you can go through where you can actually purchase a vehicle completely outfitted, except for your radio, for about $58,000. That's lights, sirens, cage, that is everything. That's just, that's one of the things that is, is going to have to be researched and look at and see where we are. As of right now, I know that we have the three patrol vehicles. We have the two Dodge Durangos that were purchased, the Chevy Tahoe. And then we have two administrative vehicles. From what I have seen, it was on the street, now it is off the street. They have one of the older Explorers that they still have that has been parked. It was a high mileage, it was bought and used again with. I'm not a fan of buying used, especially with those vehicles, because I've seen how it's worked for us in the past with being with the city before. It's where you buy a vehicle and within three to four months, you're having major repairs that you're having to do to it because they've been driven hard. Just because you buy a vehicle with 60,000 miles on it, most cities have a policy that when they reach 60,000 to 75,000 miles, they're out of service. They are replaced. They have, that is their policy. And there's a reason. Is those cars go from a dead stop to, you know, down the road as quick as they can go. So, they're, they're, they're driven hard. So, it's just going to be looking and see what best serves the city and evaluating our maintenance programs. You know, how, how are we doing our maintenance programs? How are we doing tires? You know, how is our rotation with those vehicles? You know, how often do they need to be driven? Because if they're driven 24 hours a day, seven days a week, back to back to back, that's just a bad, because you're putting more and more miles on them. So, there's, there's a lot that actually goes into that. Policies, take home, you know, take home vehicle policies, those kinds of things. We need to, we need to research that, look into that. I'm not aware of, and there may be, but I am not aware of a take home vehicle policy. So, that is something that needs to be looked at.
Hey, Brian?
Yes?
Just follow up from Jason said about trade homes. He called and they told you to call the company?
Yes, sir.
And so, he called from my mom's house and no one came? They had a scheduled date. And so, when I called it the second time and told them that they missed, we'd do it the next week. So, when they didn't show up the second time, we went down to city hall and I asked them, you know, who oversees that? And there's no one, just for your information, there's no one overseeing?
No, sir, there's actually not anyone that oversees it because it is voted on by the council as to who provides the services. And so, there is technically nobody that is overseeing that program to make sure that those treatments are getting picked up. I know that at one time, the city had gotten bids on services to have a company come through and chip once a month. And they never, they never followed through. So, no, ma'am, the city does not have a chipper anymore. That got sold.
And so, by previous administration, Chief Benton was here.
So, yeah, that chipper, that chipper was sold. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe the truck that was actually utilized for that was sold as well.
And I believe the asshole machine was sold off?
Yes, sir.
My question to you is about this, naturally, we know they spent $800,000 on fire trucks, which they shouldn't have. But what about this new grant that they've received that is $784,000 and is supposed to be used for water, sewer, and streets?
Infrastructure, yes, sir.
And nobody's even said anything about starting a project or anything?
I don't think that they really made a decision on utilizing that until they were guaranteed the grant, is from what I'm understanding. So, now if, if, now that I believe that they are guaranteed the grant, now they will start the process on figuring out what they're, what part of infrastructure they're going to utilize that grant for.
And that's actually a very, very limited scope that they can use that on.
Yes, very, very limited. So, it is infrastructure, only water, sewer, the streets. It's very limited on what they can.
And my deal about the fire trucks is you spend $800,000. You had to have a current audit at the time. There was not a current audit at the time that they purchased those trucks. And they hadn't had a current audit in some three years. Yet they went ahead and purchased them anyway. Whether it be mayor, whether it be city council, who it be, they all were in on the decision. So, therefore, the people that are in Whitney are losing out now because we don't have enough water to go to the schools. We don't have enough sewage capacity in order to clean that up. They've had problems with the pump station that's out here at the high school and still nothing's being done.
I do know that the lift station in front of the school was finally fixed. I do know that that was taken care of. On the purchase of the trucks, that is something that when you rely on your department administration and your department heads to give you all the information that you need to make those decisions, that's what you rely on. I have my personal views on it after being with the department, but this is not about my personal views. This is about ways that we can fix the situation at hand and try to make sure that we best serve the citizens with what we have and ways that we can, the ways that we can lower taxes and ways that we can improve city services and those kinds of things. It was done. What's done is done. It's not anything that we can do about it now. We just have to move forward and try to, and try to make the best decisions that we can. I'm not going to go into the, I'm not going to go into this and say that I am 100% the best person for this job. There are three people that are running. I know what my background is. I know what my history is. I know what my experience level is. I have ideas on the ways to do that. But it's also going to take the other five people across the table to make those decisions as well. So, as a council-run city municipality, I can make my recommendations. Ultimately, it's up to those people. Yes, ma'am.
Can you share some, maybe two things that, that happened when you were on city council that you thought was a really good decision that you guys did and something that you didn't think the city moved forward with well on?
Oh, you're putting me way back.
Just generalities, not vote counts.
You're putting me way, you're putting me way back. That's been six years ago, seven years, something like that. Colleague, trying to think, there's been so much that's happened since then. Maybe I will be honest, and I honestly can't.
Yeah, I know, I know.
That's an honest, that's, that's kind of one of those that I'm trying, I'm trying to go back and remember, but there's been so much that has transpired over, over that time. And really then, there wasn't a whole lot, I mean, there, there really wasn't a whole lot of major decisions that we actually made then. It was really more the general, the general day-to-day of just the day-to-day operations of, of the city as far as, honestly, if I could come up with something, I would tell. But I really, like I said, I really can't because nothing, nothing major stands out in my mind as far as this was something that we really, and I will say also, you rely on your administration within the city to provide you with information as to things that are going on? And if you don't get that information 100%, you can't really make the decisions to make those changes.
I think you just answered Rudy's why follow-up.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the thing is that you rely on your city administration to provide you with the correct information. And if they don't provide you with that and things are done and you don't find out until they, you're already off of the council and then all of a sudden, these things are happening and you're like, how did that happen? When did that happen? Why did that happen? And there's nothing you can do because you're no longer in that position to try and rectify or fix that situation. And that did happen qualitatively. There were things that were changed or done or implemented and we did not know about until after it had already transpired.
So, so Rudy's follow-up and his, why do you think you can make changes as mayor if we couldn't make changes when you were on the city council?
Because we didn't have the information we needed to make those changes. That is the whole thing. And my thing is, is that as mayor, I'm going to hold my department heads accountable. Things are not, my, my ability to be able to be around more, especially now because of my schedule with work, I'm off for four days unless I'm on call because I work a 48/96 rotation. I will be in the city unless I am getting called into work or I have a scheduled training, I will be in the city four days a week. I will be in and out of city hall at any given point in time. And I am going to bring every department head in, if elected. And I am going to ask them, what is your job description? What do you do on a day-to-day? I want to know because I want to make sure that they know what their, what their purpose is and what their job is. Not going to have people sitting in front of the sewer treatment plant or the pump station in front of the high school at 8:00 in the morning, 8:15 in the morning, and they're sitting in the truck playing on their cell phone. And I know this because I passed by there when it was happening. That's not acceptable. That is city tax dollars that are paying your salary to sit in your truck and play on your cell phone. Not acceptable.
Rudy's next follow-up is the council runs the city. So, I guess that kind of leads us into council stuff.
The council does run the city, but as I said, as mayor, I can make recommendations.
And out, and on council, you were only one of five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Rudy had mentioned about the tax on the bed and the head bed tax.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have any hotels?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Wasn't there one?
There was one. They actually went in and they completely renovated that. And it is now up for sale. They had originally gone in and renovated it because they were going to utilize it for bed and breakfast for fish, for like fishermen around the lake. And the work was done. And then they, it is now up for sale.
Does, you know why?
No, ma'am, I do not know why. I don't know who purchased it. I'm not sure exactly what happened on that. But yes, they actually went in and they did a lot of renovation to it and then it got put up for sale.
So, what's the issue with the tax on that?
If I may, that you're probably looking at also short-term rental, Airbnbs. So, there's, there's, that, that comes into play in cities also.
Yes, because you have those that are closer to the lake.
But they're city limits?
No, they are actually outside of the, they are actually outside of the city limits and they are closer to the lake. So, those gentlemen can actually put their boat in the water. A lot of them, they put their boat in the water and they have a dock. And so, they're able to leave their boat in the water. They're not having to take it out, put it back in, take it out, put it back in. They're actually there on the water with an Airbnb.
But is that something that mansovert or no?
No, that is actually out in the county. Yeah, so the only thing that we had that was actually something along those lines was that one. Out on 22 and it never came to fruition. They did a bunch of work to it and then it went up for sale.
All right, do we have Airbnbs or the Airbys within the city limits?
That is a question that I do not have an answer to because I have not heard of. And I don't even know that we have an ordinance on anything pertaining to bed and breakfast or Airbnb or?
The closest that I know of would be the home occupation ordinance.
That would be the only, that would be the only thing. But as far as like actual permitting for an Airbnb, because those, if you have people that are staying in those, and I would not really have to look into the research, but I think there is certain fire code things that you have to make sure of, such as fire extinguishers, emergency aids, and those kinds of things. And I'm not aware of any, I know, I keep walking around.
It's okay.
I'm not aware of any that are within, that are within the city limits.
Y'all want another Rudy question? How about commercial property that has living quarters?
In other words, he, he must be talking about the buildings downtown.
I suspect so.
Yes, there, there are businesses downtown that have living, that have living quarters. And those have been in place for so long that they should be granted.
That's great.
Customary use.
That's actually like the place in Gatesville, what, two months ago that burned that the mechanic lived in the shop and wound up dying in the, in the street. That the mechanic lived in the shop and wound up dying in the structure by it.
But yeah, I mean, those are technically, should technically be grandfathered in because they've been allowed to be that way this long. Anything prior to an ordinance being implemented, they should be grandfathered in. Then if an ordinance is implemented, if there's a change made, they move out, that property can't be re-rented or reused as living quarters. So there's different things that we have to, we have to look at.
I think those were originally done that way to draw people to downtown Whitney because people wanted to live where their business was.
And there's still people that want to do that to this day.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, that's something that we would need to research and look at. And, you know, look at the code, look at the code, look at international fire code, look at building code. And for me, if I was a business owner and I wanted to live in the town where I had a business, I would want to be where my business is because you're looking at, you're looking at, you're looking at cost savings of living where your actual business is. Just because you're already paying rent or whatever or payment on structure. So that's just something that we would need to research and look at.
It weren't great for Granbury downtown.
Well, and Rudy's thing is how does that help the tax base? It's taking money away from the city. It's not the city's money.
I would get take more money away from the insurance companies than with the city if you lived near your business.
Again, that is one of those that it would need, because here's the thing, is how is it, if they decide, okay, I'm going to have a business in town, but I'm going to live in the county, the city's not getting the money anyway.
There you go.
The city's not going to get that money because rental property in the city is pretty much non-existent to where rental property in the county is more abundant. So they're going to be living in the county, so the city's not going to be receiving that tax anyway.
Thanks, Brian.
Anybody ask any questions, please? I'll be here.
I'm sure Rudy will have more.
Well, Rudy, that's the reason why we have Facebook pages where you can ask those type of questions.
Isn't it nice to have a forum where people can engage via Facebook and...
And especially when, you know, questions coming out of the clear blue sky that, you know, really and truly you have to get it from the top and not nobody from somebody who's been in it before. I'd like to introduce Amy Teal. She's running for Whitney City Council. And she is one of two candidates that I know of, both of which are here tonight. Debbie Gregory is on the back row. And Amy Teal is behind the camera, so I will let Amy take her turn at the mic.
Do you want to watch this and when Rudy has a question, you can holler it out?
No, because...
Okay, Rudy, you're on your own.
Now, Rudy, thanks for your question.
So, so yes, my name is Amy Teal. I am running for city council. I would appreciate your vote. My big things are reining in spending and increasing transparency and defending property rights. That's what I've got on my thing here. This is what I've been working on across Texas at the local, county, school board, state, and national levels. As things happen in different meetings all over the place, I have testified on these things. I have spoken on these. I have helped work with other candidates and electives on these particular issues. I take them very seriously. The kind of cool thing that I want to point out is we're going in ballot order on this forum. So information and engaging people in the process is one of the things I really like to do. On the sample ballot, Mayor, the city of Whitney is the first thing up. So we had Brian. Whitney City Council is next. My name just happens to be before Debbie's, so I'm next. If you live in the city limits of Whitney, you need to remember to vote both sides of your ballot because the school board's on the back. So letting people know what's going on is a big deal. I've been streaming the city council meetings. I'll show up and I'll screen the school board meetings. It's a forum and an opportunity for people to see and interact and catch up with what's going on. We talked about the budget and with the city budget and how we don't necessarily know as candidates who are not serving on the council right now, what all the specific details are. We'll find out a lot more when they have the budget workshop meetings. We'll find out more about what cities can and can't do up today as elected with Texas Municipal League Training. They're going to, we have city attorneys, we have Texas Municipal League, and we have a lot of other organizations out there that help guide small cities on cost-effective ways to proceed. And then it's just a matter of whether we just decide to implement them or not. Based on what some of the questions Rudy was sharing, short-term rental. I would be opposed to implementing a tax on that because I'm a property rights chick. And if the city needs more money, we need to figure out better ways, free market ways to implement that. Downtown businesses and living in your business, that's a customary use of business properties in small towns. And I mean, if we were to just strike that, then you are completely upending what people have come to know as to what a small town's about. And, you know, it takes money away from the city. It doesn't take money away from the city because it was never the city's money to begin with. And this is something that really resonates with me is property taxes. I would eliminate property taxes if I could. If we could do a bond army and eliminate city taxes, that would be great. I don't necessarily expect that. I would love to see city council do something like that. It's like, school board can't do that. They're run by the state. But at the city level, there are things that we can do to rein in spending and lower property taxes. You know, one of the more recent ones was $48,000 for cameras for the library. I love Kristy. She's doing some great things there, but those are, that was a really expensive contract for really expensive cameras with no comparables, back to information from staff on how to make, how you act as a city council. And we still haven't seen the contract on that to see really what it's going to cost us. The AG just ruled that they have to give me the contract with a few redactions, but we'll see how that comes out. So yeah, there's certain things that we're going to have to do as a full council, and those will probably not all be unanimous votes. I can talk about the things that I would not vote for. It's like, I will not vote for a tax rate that's above the new, no new revenue rate. That's me. And if everybody else wants that, then it would be a four to one vote and the rate would pass. That's the way the cookie crumbles. So mostly that, but sample ballot, back to me and information. I was reading about the questioning of the election two years ago. So one of the things that we've been working on this time around is I've hosted a training on how to be a poll watcher. I've never done poll watching before. I've always been working outside. Debbie has. I've always been working outside the polling location, either block walking or electioneering. So this was a fascinating training for me. This was a learning curve. I am actively seeking poll watchers. It's a really great way to get local people engaged in the process. The more eyes and ears you have watching something, the less you're going to have something like, it was rigged, or they didn't let these people vote, or so-and-so voted and they shouldn't have. Because you've got eyes and ears there to back this up and not just paid employees. So if you know anybody who has a political nerve and wants to be in the polling location, each candidate is allowed to appoint up to two poll workers, poll watchers, to be in there. So it's a short Secretary of State training certificate that you got to print out and then a candidate appointment that you have to take in with you. They have changed the law on how often or how long you can poll watch. It used to be a minimum of like four hours that you had to be in there. That's gone. You can now do an hour in the morning, an hour in the afternoon, whatever you want to do. I did record that training. It was really good and I put it on my website. I'm still learning websites, me and GoDaddy here. So, yeah, but that's on this page right here. We also did a training about how to protest your property taxes. Because we're talking about the city taxes, city tax rates, and values. And if the city is losing tax base, that's kind of a reflection of the situation around you with your residents. The city of Whitney, on the website, the median income is $37,000. $37,000 median household income. These are people that don't have that kind of money to be putting up anyway. And it really sucks to have to tell somebody, you know what, we can't fix your road right now. We don't have the money. But at the end of the day, they have to be able to feed their kids. And for me, that's the priority. They need to be able to be safe in their home and feed their kids. We don't have a city if we're evicting people. We don't have a city if we're launching a bunch of funds. Kind of goes back to the beautification question. I was on the Red Oak Parks and Rec Board a while back. And I've watched a lot of the Waukesha Hachy city beautification stuff, so I've kind of watched this over the years. You know, in the Lake Whitney Garden Club, we've got, you know, different planters and stuff like that. And that's one type of beautification. But at the end of the day, we don't need the city taking a sledgehammer to the community in the name of beautifying it. We have a community of people. And in Amy's world, I would love to see a city of Whitney beautification committee. And their first goal should be to take in suggestions for areas that need help. And then be able to voluntarily work on, hey, so-and-so's house over here at this corner really needs some help. Can we get some volunteers over there? You know, there's a lot of stuff happening in this alley back here. Can we get some people organizing over here? And just get people working together. We've helped work on a couple of people's homes across, you know, the city of Whitney. You know, Debbie's been out there working in the heat. But that's what it takes. I mean, it takes a village, not necessarily the same kind of village that Hillary wants, but it does take a community of people to get stuff done. And I would love to see people working voluntarily on that. So that would be my idea for city of Whitney beautification projects. When we were at the Lions Club Park Cleanup, because we got the Lions Club that's working on on a new park at the Pocket Park, you know, outside the tennis courts. Hill County Lake Whitney Lions Club, Texas Next Road or Ninth, April 26. And so this will give us two Lions Clubs in the city that are working on a lot of big projects at just different areas of what's happening in the community. So I'd encourage people to come out to this. There's my plug for the Lions Club. This is a big community deal. It impacts the city. It impacts the county. It impacts everything that's happening in the school district too. So, but being involved in the Lions Club is, for me, a free market voluntary way to help work on beautifying the city, advancing parks and recreation stuff, and helping people look for grants and ideas. So there's, what's next? This is another thing. I figured since I was flipping around bags of election information while I was block walking, I threw in some more stuff about the Lake Whitney Public Library. Community Health and Local Resource Fair, Tuesday, 4/29, 5 to 7 p.m. Mental Health Clinic, Physical Wellness, Health Screening, Low-Income Food Resources, and Transportation Health. I plan to be there, helping staff a table with the food bank, the Lake Whitney Ministerial Alliance. I've been volunteering up there and you start seeing just how much people are trying to get by on. We have people that request specific foods that don't require a microwave because they don't have a microwave. And we've had, you know, we'll come along and instead of taking one of the boxes of food, it's, we have someone who's homeless, so they need specific types of foods for that. These are all people that are in our community and they need that help. They need that encouragement. And they need to know that the city's not just out after every single dollar that the city can get their fingers in your pockets on. So that's me. And I know that I'm not going to always be a yes vote for everything or voting in lockstep with the city council. I will be a no vote on a lot of things, but I'm going to be a voice looking at what else can we do? And the information thing is a big deal for me. I'm still going to be streaming. I'm still going to be requesting agenda packets and sharing those publicly where I can. I'm going to want to see the information. When we had that $750,000 grant discussion, that public hearing, that public hearing opened, but we still didn't really know anything about it. And then Billy did a great job questioning the guy that was, they were the grant thing. And they shared a lot of information that, had we known more about what the criteria was, some people might not have gone around driving and looking at different ways to spend that kind of money. And then at the very next public hearing, they opened the public hearing and it was simple. It was about the Wildcat Drive. But there was no discussion about what this was about until the public hearing even opened. So people need to be informed. This may be a low-income community, but that doesn't mean that people are illiterate. Doesn't mean they want no information. It doesn't mean they don't care. These are all people that can read, they can make decisions, and they want to be involved. We have to give them a way to be involved. And they're working odd jobs. They've got kids. They're trying to deal with, you know, caretaking of elderly relatives on a shoestring budget. And the more things that we can do as a city to support them in that, so they can, you know, the rising tide lifts all boats. That's just going to help the city in the long run. So what I missed, guys? Oh, so in my zeal to try to share information, on my block walking little doorknob hangers, I've been putting what the upcoming meetings are and telling people, this is what's coming up. This one is about the candidate forums tonight. And I talked to one gal tonight and she goes, I can't make those. I've got clinicals early in the morning. You know, and somebody else, I can't get there. I've got to take care of somebody else, you know? And so making sure that this information is available to the people is a big deal for me. And, you know, this will change the next time I create more doorknob hangers. So, okay. I think that's, oh, and my Whitney Area Voter Engagement Group. You know, I wanted a place where people can discuss political stuff very openly and where political stuff can be archived. A lot of people don't like to do the whole, you know, political and religion stuff, but politics, this is how we teach our community how to act and how to respond to each other. Politics is important. So Whitney Area Voter Engagement is where I've been putting a lot of information just out to the public. So that's me.
I have a question about volunteering.
Yes.
Would you, and I guess it has been approved since the Lions Club were now helping with the city park or the Pocket Park, I'll call it?
Yes.
Okay. I had several people come with me to a meeting and we weren't allowed, or permitted, call this better word, permitted to help volunteer because some of us, I think all but two, they don't live in the city limits, so we couldn't...
When was that? Last year? Yeah, I didn't actually join Lions Club till like January.
Well, it's not even about the Lions.
This was the city.
Oh, the city. I had a meeting with some people within the city and asked how we could help put up the playground equipment. That was before the church put something together. And we were going to help with the OPAR, whatever we needed to help with.
Yeah, right.
I think Debbie went with it. And they had, I was informed, we all were informed, that the city had to make an amendment to an ordinance that would allow volunteers that would live out of city limits. And there were several ladies there with me from Whitlock. And we don't live in city limits, but we certainly, you know...
That's interesting. That's interesting to me. I would have to look at what the city attorneys say on city insurance liability stuff. But people are already allowed to come to the parks, whether you live in the city of Whitney or not. So we're already inviting people from the community to come onto the grounds and play and jump off of slides and jump down from things. and play and jump off of slides and jump down from things inclined and do things like that that are inherently, what do we call it in the Parks Department, it was, you know, a safe risk type of thing. So I'm not sure what was going on there. I would like to find out. I think that one of the things they've done, I know insurance liability is a big deal. I know it is. But there's a lot of ways around that. And I know that the Lions Club has its own insurance. Yeah, Lions Club has its own insurance, so that might be something. But I would be, I'm kind of surprised we don't have a Parks Board here. We don't have a Parks Board, we don't have a library board. And we have several parks, actually, and there's a lot going on at them. We have a pretty decent-sized library for this area, and there's a lot going on there. And I would think that especially by the time you start getting into advisory boards, community advisory boards, and setting up volunteer efforts to invite people to come volunteer, it's mostly a paperwork thing. So I can't tell you what happened. I'd be interested in finding out more. If somebody proposed that, maybe. The playground equipment was removed and I think taken to Mighty Cove. Someone can correct me on that. They know the answer.
So the Lions Club is going to...
I'm not sure if it's the Lions Club or the city that is taking care of the equipment, because it sat there for a while. You know, I have some pictures of the wooden parts of it just rotting away. So I have not been personally updated about the status of that equipment. But it's my understanding they're going to bring it back. So, that's it for me.
What about the water bills?
Oh, gosh.
I mean, there again, we don't live in the city, but we have a business in the city and our...
Water's a big deal. It is like, you know, there's only a few key things that a city is required to do, and water's one of them. I'm not, I have not been advised on what's going on. We hear that they needed to raise the rate. We hear that the water rate had not gone up in several years. So this was basically, you know, on track for if it had been a minor change every year. But, I mean, if you needed minor changes back then, do the minor changes at a time. That way people can get used to it a little bit. I don't know. I don't know. We need a new water treatment plant too, apparently. And they're supposed to be plans for it. I haven't seen them. At the Lions Cleanup Day, we were told that there is a Parks Master Plan for the City of Whitney. I haven't seen it. Haven't seen it. Those are the kinds of things that I would love to see just shared with the public.
Water treatment plan is supposed to be four million dollars and it's supposed to start this year. Where are you going to get the four million dollars from?
I don't know. They'll probably want to run a bond and I'd have to vote against that because I oppose bonds, but...
Well, and the city doesn't have the money for the bonds.
Bond capacity's a big deal.
Right. And the citizens do not have it. So you can't rob Peter to pay Paul because they've already done that.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, you know, you can go back and point fingers and say, well, you should have, could have. But guess what? You should have thought about that before you went and did it.
And my biggest thing is, for everybody watching, if you have questions about this and your electeds have not made that information public to you, maybe they need to. And if they haven't, maybe it's time for new electeds who will make that information public to you and invite you into those discussions. There's two budget workshops scheduled in August. I plan to attend. I plan to stream them so that people can see what's going on. And we'll get to hear more about that, whether I'm on council or attending as a resident. I'm going to keep doing the same things I've been doing. So that's me.
Amy, I got a question down.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned being the local senate vote. I can absolutely appreciate standing on your morals. However, you know, obviously that kind of gets, if you're just four to one, four to one, four to one.
It gets all four to one.
Right, yeah, for sure. What is your vision on... On progressing your agenda, given the constraints of the legal stuff with, you know, Open Meetings Act and what have you, I mean, you can only meet so many times, you can only talk to somebody.
Yep, walking corners.
And I'm sure that transparency and the streaming is part of that. Is there anything else behind that? Your vision for making that change?
Mostly just information. I mean, as elected officials, we have more access to this information. And we don't have to go through an attorney for every single thing. There's open communication. There's a ton of discussion that happens right now in open forum and council, and this is where it needs to happen. So I would absolutely encourage, and I mentioned at one of the earlier council meetings that if we feel the need to have two meetings a month, let's not have special meetings. Let's just schedule two meetings a month so that discussions can happen in the open. Everything can be fully discussed and aired out, and it's on record. It's on record. That way there's no questions about, well, they met in this back room over here and didn't tell us what was going on. So, yeah, information. My primary agenda is information and transparency. If I can accomplish anything as far as actually lowering taxes or making a cut here or something else, to me, that's gravy. And I kind of, I came into partisan politics on the Ron Paul crowd, you know, Dr. No in Congress. And one of the things that he was really great about was finding ways to cut things in a budget, in a bill, or in a project, but then he's still voting no on it. But even though he's voting no on something that he helped craft, it still ends up saving the people somewhere down the line. And I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that.
So, under your impression of what that fifty-one, fifty-four million, fifty-four thousand dollars was used for, for the cameras for the library, were they not supposed to start streaming meetings after they got those cameras?
No, they're streaming meetings otherwise. These are security cameras. These are not cameras for, you know, for live streaming. There's companies that do specific live streaming camera capabilities. And that's not what these are. These are just security cameras. And you can look up Verkada, V-E-R-K-A-D-A. You know, they've got a website. You can see exactly what they do and the extent and limit and scope of their product.
But they didn't explain to the citizens of the city when they purchased those cameras that it was going to cost them almost fifty-two hundred dollars a year.
They did not, I do not think they disclosed exactly what it would cost in storage fees. Billy did talk about the fact that there would be more storage fees. So that's just a matter of taking a look at the... I'd go back and review that video because I've got it, you know, you can review what was actually said. But, yeah, once you've got the contract, the contract is the primary source document for that. And I'm a big fan of primary source documents. So, anything else?
If I have any questions for Amy? Thank you, Amy.
All right, you're welcome. Let me go see what Rudy's been saying. No? Nothing. Wait, 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 wait. Yeah.
I would like to take this time to introduce Debbie Gregory, another candidate for the Whitney City Council.
You are on the spot.
I don't want to be on the spot. My name's Debbie Gregory. I'm married to my beloved husband, Michael Slack. And what else do you want to tell about me? Y'all, I've lived here a long time already. But I think what really concerns me about our city right now is that we've decided to be bigger than our britches, maybe. And I don't like that. Doesn't really pass muster with me. One of the things that I heard when Brad Slaton was still mayor, and it came from the city council, but he asked that we think about our name and our branding. Because whatever your name, whatever it is, we have to have honesty, we have to have integrity. Does it resonate in your gut? Or do you hear the law? And I look at this sign, this motto we have, and I hear it, and I'm, "The getaway capital of Texas." Who in their right mind thinks Whitney's the getaway capital of Texas? I mean, shoot yourself in the head, whatever. Is it your capital of Texas, really? I don't get it. It isn't, I would never go, let me see, let me go to Whitney, Texas. No, I moved here, but it wasn't like I'm going to go and get away. That isn't what I hear. Now, whenever we used to say, "It's the best little town by a damn sight", that wasn't true. It resonates. You know what I mean? It's real. It's not a made-up fact. It is a little town by a damn sight. So, you know, I'm just saying there's certain things we need to check ourselves. Do we hear honesty? Do we hear integrity in our gut? Or are we being schmoozed and, you know, whatever? That's what I see and I hear when I go to city council meetings. And we don't hear the whole enchilada. You hear bits and pieces. And I understand getting, like Amy talked about, the documents. I've been trying to do that since about 2004, 2005. And I would receive, sometimes I would receive responses that they, "I need to pay thousands of dollars, tens of thousands of dollars." Well, that's not going to happen, anybody that knows me. I had raised three children for seventeen years as a single mom because I have all these buku's of bucks in my back pocket burned to be paid at City Hall. I thought, you know, well, you can just ask questions and get somebody to email you some little document that is a spreadsheet, and you can read this spreadsheet from your email. Who knew that wouldn't happen? So it's been a tough, slogging road to try to get documents from City Hall. I'm not saying you can't. I'm just saying it depends on if they really want you to have it sometimes. Maybe that's not what you wanted to hear tonight. I don't know. Anyway, I am just interested in stopping the property tax situation as a real estate broker, as a friend to widows and veterans. I do not want to see another home foreclosed on because somebody cannot pay the increases that have been brought to their doorstep. It's time for us to stop what we started a long time ago. And if you really think about it, this all started with carpet baggers at the end of the war between the North and the South. So why do we continue it? What is wrong with us that we're still taxing ourselves into oblivion? When, once you purchase a property, it should be yours, you shouldn't have to rent it or lease it every year, to taxes that you're still paying insurance and everything. It's ridiculous. And I say that because I've worked with so many elderly people and those who have paid for their homes, and they cannot keep them once the appraisals go up and up and up. And you say, "Oh, but they're fixed once they reach a certain age." Oh, trust me, there are ways that their property, those taxes go up and up and up. And I've seen it happen too many times. And I've been there when people are evicted. And if you think, "That's not fun. It's not fun." Law enforcement's there, everybody's there to throw people out of their homes and all of their belongings. And I'm sorry, but we shouldn't be a part of that. It's not right. Yes, people have to pay for their property, but if it's paid for, the taxes are eating them up. It's not right. In my explanation, anyway. So we've had some issues with the city. I don't, I didn't intend to have an issue with the city. I didn't like the way the water meters were handled. I don't like widow ladies having a six-hundred-dollar water bill and a three-hundred-and-fifty-dollar plumber bill, plumbing bill because the city put a new meter on and it was leaking and they knew it or they wouldn't have called and said, "Oh, by the way, you're losing water." I know what happens. Mechanical issues can happen. Doesn't seem right to me. And then the city can say, "Oh, well, no, we can't take care of that bill because the water's been used." So then other people have to come together to try to help pay for the bill. We have wonderful people who help, wonderful people. I thank them. And I should have thanked you all for coming tonight, for the forum that Larry arranged, and for Amy streaming. Oh, I don't want to be on the camera. And for all of you showing up, and for Jason's meet with the school board being here. Yes, sir. I see that hand. I'm not even a minister.
I have, I've always questioned going to the polls to vote. And in a town like this, people that have businesses in the town should be able to vote on town issues, not federal issues, you know? That's another thing. That's covered as one of your rights. But the people that, I don't think they hit the vote. And I always think, why in the world would they want to do things for the city when the city, all the city will do with taxing?
Well, the unfortunate part is that's not controlled by the city.
Right.
That's controlled by the state.
It has been interesting to study state law on elections. Back, you know, sixties, seventies, it was property owners who voted, property owners. And now it's everybody who lives in the city, and there's good reasons why on both. Even if you just rent, you're still subject to whatever the city does and imposes. And, yeah, so it's going to be interesting to see how election law changes because I suspect it still will. But Debbie, you have a Rudy question.
Oh, I do?
Yes, you do.
Hello, Rudy.
I'm kind of jealous. I didn't get a Rudy question. Don't you gain from high values as a Realtor?
What would I gain?
I'm guessing commissions.
If you can't sell a property because the valuation is too high, then you don't need to get paid. So it just, I always tell people, do you want to sell the property or shop the property? The price has to be right for it to sell. And sometimes our, the way we have valued our properties out of sight is kind of ridiculous.
And I guess, I think I know where he's going with this. Can you clarify, does the sale price of a property depend exclusively on the appraised value of a property?
No, that is a misnomer that is ridiculous. Okay, so the appraisal district puts a price on your property. But what we do, and they use our sales too and listings. So they use the multiple listing service that is, we pay our dues for, to go in and check out which properties have been listed, which have sold, which have just, you know, they've just fallen through the cracks, and which ones are pending. The pending means it's going to close in the next so many months, or thirty days or forty-five days. If it's sold at a certain price, what price did it sell for? We have to put all that in the multiple listing service. Did they have any seller's concessions? So did the seller pay ten thousand on the closing costs? Things like that. It's all in the multiple listing service. But sometimes you, in our city of Whitney, it's eclectic. It is not a cookie cutter neighborhood in every single neighborhood. They're not little, little houses that are all exactly alike. So when you have a house here that's one price, and a little bitty house next door to it that's, uh, should be a whole nother price, but they put a value on it that is too high, it doesn't make sense. So we come in and we do what is called a comparable market analysis. And we compare like properties to like properties, not things that are way out of whack. That's what we do. Does that make sense?
It does to me.
Anyway. I just want to say that the National Association of Realtors has been through a really hard time the last couple of years. It has really messed with our minds, it's given us a lot of angst because the classes we've had to take to try to understand how to do things so the public and the Texas Real Estate Commission are satisfied, has been crazy. It is, nothing has changed, nothing has changed. The buyer still brings the money to the table for a seller-to-seller property. Nothing has changed, okay? If this buyer doesn't bring the money, it's not gonna close, okay? But we've gotta jump through hoops about it now, just because somebody brought a lawsuit and they won, then they turned around and established their own real estate company. "Oh, but they're gonna charge $50 every time you wanna see a property." So, just saying, this is what happens with lawsuits, okay? They're bizarre. So, um, I don't even know where I was going now with that.
Well, when you have homes in Whitney, 'cause there's one just down the road from us that's back up for sale again, the original listing price on that house was over $300,000. And now it's already back up for sale, and that hadn't even been, it hadn't even been sold six months. So that's just like one block away from your house coming back to what it was.
It's true. I mean, we've had properties listed, and we've got buyers looking at them all the time. And we see one next door going, hmm. You know, but sometimes it's just as simple as this. Like one down the street from us, so, and I looked at Wyatt Sullivan, and I found out it was bought by, you know, an investor to make it a rental property. It's a very nice house, why? Well, the pictures were horrible, and it was on the market, overpriced. You have to price it right, and you have to do your due diligence. So we hire professional photographers to take the pictures, we don't, you know? Yes, you can do that, but it doesn't make the property look its best, which is your job. If you're gonna list a property, then you have an obligation to make it be its best for the seller. Otherwise, you're failing them. That's what I would say. Okay? Yes, ma'am?
So, kind of like my question to Brian. As a Realtor, you've gotten to speak with lots of people in Whitney as they're buying houses, as they're selling houses. What are some of the reasons that you've heard of people moving to Whitney? What's their why? And what are some of the reasons that people move from Whitney?
Well, as I was having my heart attack a couple of months ago, I, uh, was doing up a contract for a young couple who wanted to leave the big city and come to the small town. And they want their daughter to spend her last four years in a small town, okay? She didn't like that idea, but dad says, "No, this was on me, I'm deciding." And I understand, you know, when I came, I would sit at a stoplight on roof snow for more than twenty minutes at a time, just trying to get through Watauga to go to Keller. And I moved to Hillsborough, and I could get anywhere in the whole city in ten or fifteen minutes. It makes a big difference, it's an impact on your life and your children's lives, 'cause my kids wouldn't wanna be anywhere but the small city, you know? I mean, it's just a different lifestyle. And so most people who come here are either, they come because they have visited Sun Country or the Thousand Trails, and they want to move here after they have visited, that's a lot of it. Um, a lot of times, they just really, they wanna get their kids away from the big city because they're done, you know? You can't, you can only churn up your anxiety so long before you've got to stop. So, I just, it's time.
And the other, and the other side of that, why people move away?
Why they leave? One of the reasons, we lost our hospital, and people had to leave. Businesses had to close. Um, because you need the hospital specifically for a lot of reasons. I won't even go into that, there's people that can answer that question. But it's important to have the medical facilities. And I tried really hard to keep that, and I wanted to see Baylor, or Texas Health, or somebody come in and, you know, give us the shop we needed, but we didn't get it. We do have people who have bought the facility and really fixed it up, but we really lost out when that happened. And that's part of my heart for Whitney right now is, we've lost so many businesses. How do we get them back? How do we encourage them to come back? We need this. I mean, I have listings, but they're not my listings anymore. I've chosen at sixty-nine to take a step back. So, all of my listings, I refer to a wonderfully young broker. And so, I still have my finger in the pot, and I love the commercial properties. And we have so many buyers looking at the properties that he's listing. I'm just excited for the people who are wanting to come to Whitney. You know, they're from all over.
That, that leads right into Rudy's next question. If elected to the city board, what would you do to bring new businesses to the area? And/or something for the youth to do? So I guess, like you were just talking about, commercial properties, what are businesses looking for when they're shopping Whitney?
So a lot of times, mom and pop operations do not have their profit and loss statements, their, their liabilities and assets in document form, and they may just, you know, use out of the till. Everything needs to be documented. It's more difficult to sell a property. When I sold Jake's convenience store, we had to spend a lot of time getting, organizing all the documents. Because you gotta have a document, and people have to know what they're buying, they have to know if they can make money, is it profitable? What am I, what am I paying for? And, um, it's hard to get a mom and pop operation to understand that sometimes, but it's very necessary. So, that's kind of, sometimes you think, well, it's taking forever to get that listed, or get that sold. Well, there's a whole lot of background work sometimes to get it done and established, so you can go forward. And that takes time, you know? Plus, the accountants and CPAs aren't always at your beck and call, just saying. But that does, that is, that's what's involved. I've got people come, they're coming from all over, I'm just saying. It's exciting.
So that's kind of something the Chamber of Commerce could help with, supporting businesses?
Sometimes they do, because when I worked with the Chamber of Commerce back when Horace Finley was there, he would tell me lots of times, and he would send me emails, "This person's coming from this town," and yeah, I did a lot, and when I had a United Country franchise, oh my goodness, people called me from all over the world. Which was not always fun, because they'd call me at night, every holiday. But, United Country brought people to Whitney because they sold the area, and that to me is what the Chamber of Commerce needs to be, do, which is why I think I said, "It's not the getaway capital of Texas." You know? It's, it's a wonderful little town by the damn sight, and a great lake, so marketed for what it is, branded for what it is, not for what you wanna pretend it is. Does that make sense?
He, he asked about new businesses, but I'm guessing it's not really the city's job?
Well, I think our zoning has been very messed up. I mean, how many storage buildings do we need on highway frontage roads? We need businesses on the frontage roads. We need, you know, I, I just don't know how many more we could possibly use up all. And, and, you know, back when the state wanted to put a go-around of the city of Whitney, if we had let them do that, I don't know if it can ever happen again, but you would have more road frontage for more businesses and more opportunities. We don't have that. In fact, if there's an accident, you're gonna get stuck these days because there's not any go-arounds.
Rhonda Bass. Uh, why have so many businesses closed on, in downtown Whitney?
I don't know. I don't know if it's the structure of regulations and ordinances that have been forced on people if they are not being able to do the improvements and repairs they need to do in a timely manner and efficiently and economically, okay, for their pocketbooks. I honestly don't know. But, I'm sad. I'm very sad about it, 'cause we need more businesses. We need, we need people to be able to be entrepreneurs and enjoy life. How did I get to have a real estate office? How did I get to go to school, a single mother with three children, and have my own franchise in Whitney? You know, it was encouragement, it was other people helping me, and you know, I remember Rick Penner sitting in his office, and we're talking and discussing something, and he goes, "I can't talk to you like this anymore, Debbie, you're my, you're the one that's, that I have to work against, you know, you're my competitor." And I went, "Rick, I'm not your competitor." And he goes, "How are you, what do you mean?" I said, "I'm my own competitor. I can do as much business as I wanna do, and you can do as much business as you wanna do." And that's the way it is. You don't have to be a cookie cutter business, you can, you can work hard and still make it in America, in small-town Whitney, if we do not strangle our business owners with regulations and ordinances and that. Is that, is that okay? Is that answering your question, Rhonda?
I think as a business owner ourselves, it's people, and talking to a, a businesses that, owners that have closed their business, it's, a lot of times a lack of capital, not knowing the profit and loss statements, not knowing what they were taking on, if they took on an existing business, or if they started a new business, how long they would have to sustain that business until people heard about them, you get your growth going. But, most of us probably been to Fredericksburg, and I've said this for years, Whitney has so much more than Fredericksburg even has that we could offer.
Yes.
Seriously, with our steak and, our, our lake at stake and the beautiful
Yes.
coffee. But it's not promoted. I think that the city needs to be promoted.
Yes, I agree.
Whoever is responsible for that, I, as a person, I don't know, but that would be something, uh, on the city council, if you all could help with that.
Well, I would suggest that the Chamber of Commerce tie into the national chamber first, and then you become, you have more opportunities. And I think what I was going to say a while ago was also about, in connection with the National Association of Realtors. So, they offer opportunities. I can apply for help for the city of Whitney. I want to apply and ask them to help us to have sidewalks, to put curbs where we need to have the crosswalks for the children. I've been asking for that since 1990. I don't understand not having a crosswalk on San Jacinto when we used to have, that was so busy, there were just, people were just back and forth all over the place, and there was no rhyme or reason, because it wasn't at a corner anywhere, everybody just went across, and to me, it was traumatizing. I mean, who's going to run over who? It just, anyway, those kind of things are just, to me, sad that we've not improved from 1990, and I'm still here, and it's 2025, there's still no crosswalk, is there? I mean, there's no, and they told me it was because there weren't, you know, curbs. I, I don't know. I just, I just think that our best treasure is our children, and if we're not doing the best to take care of them, we might be having a problem. So, if I could get the National Association of Realtors to come in and help us figure out a way to get whatever money we need to do that out of life. Because I've paid my dues, most of us who've been Realtors, you've had, seen lots of Realtor businesses in Whitney, y'all know this, we all pay our dues to be a Realtor. And it doesn't need to go to somebody that sues the board, the National Association of Realtors. It needs to go to our little town. If that's what it's there for, then let's use it. The other thing I would like to see beautified and bring and draw to Whitney is, we have a little creek that runs through our town. And, you know, why do we have to wait till we're as big as, uh, some of these larger cities? Waco has a, a river walk, all these other places have them. Why can't we get the money from the National Association of Realtors and start working on that?
Private property.
Private property.
What?
It's private property.
But everything's negotiable. What is it negotiable?
Purchase price.
Purchase price.
Well, National Association of Realtors understands purchases, don't they? I'm just saying. I just wanna think outside the box and go, hey, we don't have to be stuck in the mud puddle, we can actually think outside the box and get the help we need. That's all. It's possible. If we don't think about possibilities, we'll never reach beyond where we are. Does that make sense?
Is our park the city property, or is it corporate?
The Corps of Engineers owns the city park where the ballpark is, we lease it.
The city leases it?
It's, it's actually deeded to the city under specific circumstances, and I, I put the deed itself on that Whitney area voter engagement group.
Are you talking about the Pocket Park property, or the big one?
So, the Corps of Engineers deeded four pieces of property to the city. And it doesn't say on the deed, you know, this is where the tennis courts are, this is where this is. So you have to, you know, you can, you can talk to the CAD guy, and, and they'll, they'll explain more about that. But it is, it is a deed to the city with stipulations.
Well, I understood previously, when I worked with them on that, back when, well, Mr. Slaton was a councilman 2005 to 2007, and that, that's when they were working on it. And, so, I could be totally wrong. Further checking may be needed.
And, and a lot of it is just terminology that people have been using.
There is really a lot in here.
It, it is. Rudy had, has one point. Uh, well, to answer your question, the city finally got the audits done. So, audits were behind, and since the audits are caught up now, they can start getting grants. So, catching a city up on its audits is basic function, basic role of city council, so I'm glad that basic role is getting done.
It was something we requested many years ago repeatedly, and then they did a kind of sort of audit, but it wasn't sufficient, so. Yes, I understand, and I understand they're expensive, an audit, and, and audit of everything and, you know, details is very expensive.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, what, a beautification about yards and the getting the yards mowed, and you know, people can't get the yards mowed themselves, then the city has some lawn mowers that people can check out and help them mow the grass and things to keep them from getting taken in or fine. Was a good idea. And then, I don't know how tall, but some of the grass has to get, but, you know, our own, our visibility is...
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the last.
The, I don't know how tall the grass has to get, but
They said six inches.
Six inches.
Which I will explain. So, there was a ninety-year-old man that came to a city council meeting, and he got up and he was saying that while he, he had fallen, he was in the hospital, he received letters that he had to mow his yard, and he was gonna be fine. Well, he couldn't exactly do that, since he was in the hospital, and he couldn't respond. And he was traumatized from it, because...
They worry about it. What do people worry about?
Yes, the letters are very, I would say call them bullying, okay? So we received one, and one of the things, we had emptied our storage unit out, and we're going to have to go through everything, 'cause we had two businesses, and we had a lot of, and a household and everything, a couple households. Anyway, so I'm working on that at my age and health and my husband, eighty-three. It was not a quick process. So the city got frustrated and gave us one of those letters and it was two thousand dollars a day fine per item listed. Well, one of the things listed, and they took a picture of my husband's eyesight's not what it was when he was younger. He's, he thinks I'm beautiful, so that explains it right there. But there was a strip the length of the yard that he missed. And so the strip was, they were charging us two thousand a day for that strip that he missed because of his eyesight. So I'm just saying, to me, that's bullying. So I'm fighting for the ordinary person who might have eyesight or might not be able to mow their yard as quickly because of having to be in the hospital. So that's all I'm saying. I want fairness. We, we need to be just with each other. We don't need to be stupid and overwhelming people who, the ninety-year-old man had lived there, what'd he say, sixty years or something or always like... Why would he be crushed because of these fines? And then I talked to our municipal judge and he said, "There'll be, no one can find you unless I find you." Well, it doesn't say that in the letter. It looks very legal and it looks like you have a cause number, but it says case number. And it makes you, your heart just go, "Oh!" And that's what happened to my husband. So I, I honestly believe it started helping him to have a stroke because he started walking with a little list. Thank God he restored him and I'm very blessed and happy for that. So that's what I want to see is justice in our city. I don't want to see more harm and damage to our citizens. Yes, I want our communities to be beautified. I don't know if I'm allowed to say this, but Amy's been working on property. She started working with the Lions on that park project. She went to a little lady who she found who needed help. She had us, asked us, we showed up, worked very hard on this lady's property. Lots and lots and lots of bags of trash, bags of cans that were taken to, we call them after the church, they picked them up, limbs and things. She couldn't do it. There comes a time when you can't do what you have always done and your body betrays you. And we have to be there and to know that Amy has done that for a little elderly woman, that she's come to our rescue and others rescue, that she takes people that are in need shopping for four hours. I would probably have a nervous breakdown waiting for somebody for four hours in Walmart. But she does it because she cares about our community. That's what I want to see. That's what I want to see, okay? Not hard line drools and, and the fees and the fines, but we can help each other. I appreciate y'all. Are we done?
Anybody else? Thank you Debbie.
I, I have a, I'm nearly bathed in sweat. I hope so. There, I made it.
Yeah.
I appreciate y'all.
Larry's up next. Okay. This intermission is brought to you by Larry Farmer.
I want to thank everyone that's come out tonight and the candidates, Amy Till, Brian Rushart, Debbie Gregory. If nobody knows, my name is Larry Farmer and I'm running for the Whitney School Board. I was born in Waco, Texas, graduated high school in nineteen seventy-nine, attended Baylor University, Texas State College. I owe Fordbury one free scholarship license and the rest is computer. I moved to Whitney in two thousand thirteen because I thought one of my best friends, who was DPS Officer, was gonna retire too. Unfortunately, he did, he had moved back to Mark to the family farm, so I got left here. The reason why I'm running for school board is that there are several concerning issues with children's safety, teacher accountability, and school board accountability. You need to be open to listen to your constituents that puts you there in office. You don't need to have a meeting where you go in, you voice your opinion or you ask a question and it doesn't get dealt with. My phone has been blown up in the past two months. Either I've got a father that's complained about bullying in Haiti, which took place two years ago, that has yet to be resolved. Or I've got a parent this morning at six twenty-eight that sent me a message and said they're concerned about the bus routes because there's a pedophile that lives on one of the bus routes. The way I'm a student, the parent turned around and told me. He never has been addressed, contacted. The sheriff's office contacted, superintendent's office, talked to the bus board, everybody she could possibly talk to. Hadn't been addressed. Last week, I go to the elementary school to visit a class that I have adopted. The teacher was out on the playground. As you come out of the large playground and go around to where the cafeteria entrance is to the back, there's a second grade hallway. You go up, you're supposed to be able to take a key card and swipe that lock and it's supposed to pop that door open. I had two little girls that came with me that needed to go to the restroom because I volunteered at the school and I substituted at the school. So I went back around to that door and pulled the door open, not having a key card or anything else. They had changed the security guard, they've had a problem at the junior higher or intermediate school, whichever one the security guard got beat up on. Teachers, uh, parents were notified and teachers were not notified about that incident the other day after. But yet I'm having to answer questions at all hours of the night. My concern right now is the fact that my law enforcement experience and having to deal with kids from the time I graduated high school to now has been almost thirty years. I worked at the state school where there was a sexually abused kid, emotionally abused kid. I had a six-year-old that was on my caseload. So I know about the small kids. His problem was his father pulled him and his kid brother in a car and they committed, he committed suicide. Those kids were found five days later. I'll see you there. We are talking about things we want to do for the city, but we also have to understand that our number one priority is not the city. Our number one priority are these children. They are our leaders for tomorrow. We need to educate them as such. Children with disabilities, classroom load for teachers is very high. There needing another teacher at the elementary school has not been addressed. The teacher that's over there is over the way. I hear these horror stories every day. And I try to give the best answers that I possibly can. And like I said, the text that I got at six twenty-eight this morning concerning the bus route and someone being on that route that their registered sex friend bothered them tremendously. And it also bothers me tremendously because it's not being addressed. And when you've got a parent that has gone through that and he's asked why and he's even gone to the sheriff's department and asked them to intervene, they won't do. So therefore it's left up to John Q Simpson to pick up the phone, call Pardon's Emporos, find out what they're in for, where his name is, where his address is, and see if you can't get something done about it. And then again, you may not see a PO out of here for another two to three months. The other issue I have as far as the school goes is the accountability. When the superintendent, before it was ever announced to the school board that there was going to be a five hundred dollar check for the teachers at the first of the year for Christmas parties, they were given that in good faith. Before it was ever put out in the email, it had already been discussed by one of the council members on the school board who turned around and in turn talked to an aide in another classroom. And before the superintendent got to send the letter out to the teachers, they already knew about it. It shouldn't come from somebody on the school board. It should come from that school board president and it should come from that superintendent. If that's the case, why are we paying him the big bucks to run the school? It should be a premier school that is not. Questions are there. We need to look out for our kids. We need to question our leaders. And going into the school board meeting and not saying anything or sweeping it under the rug and acting like it didn't happen is not acceptable, not in this community and not on my watch. Like I said, I've had my duties with kids and I've dealt with them all my life. And I'm not gonna have another child sexually abused on a bus route by a pedophile. I'm not gonna have them bullied at school. Because I don't care what your name is, in my eyes, they're all equal. Until the line gets crossed and the same. And it's not fair for a child to be held up as the example when it should be the parents that turn around and go to their leaders and say, "Why is something not being done?" Better yet, why is it not being addressed in the school board? The teachers aren't paid enough. The class sizes are too big. And it's time for this community, regardless of where we live, in this city or in the county, we need to rally behind the city. We need to rally behind the schools. We all need to come together and it needs to be an equal shared and not just one person doing it all. Other than that, clear question.
Larry, you mentioned the class size being too big and the lack of teachers. What, what kind of innovations would you propose on the board to be able to hire and retain good quality teachers for those gaps that we may have?
I think the pay needs to be one thing. You've got teachers that are now coming because we have a four-day school week. But you've got some teachers that are in this district that have almost thirty years of experience that are, are being paid at a lower level than their counterparts at, say, Salina or, say, Walnut Springs or at Clifton. Clifton's not that far from here. When the school's paying ten thousand dollars more than the Whitney School District is paying, there's a problem. Whether, and everybody's saying about sports. Sports is not an important thing. My child needs to learn how to read and write. They tell me what colors they're eating to where they don't eat the wrong thing and didn't. And if the teachers don't have adequate funding through the class or they can't not get the content and stuff in their class, then that means the parents step up. And myself, I take a hundred bucks out of my social security check every month. I get fifteen hundred and fifteen dollars paid a month. I take a hundred dollars out and I put it back for a pre-teenage model class. At which point I go and I buy clothes for the kids for the night. I buy clothes for the teacher in the classroom. If the teacher needs something, he starts teaching material. I don't pay for that off of Amazon or the wish list. Everybody has to throw in the pot and everybody has to benefit by seeing the kids do better, grandkids do better, have more appreciative behavior towards the teachers and also have a better outlook as far as this could be. It's, I mean, I can't blame it on Mr. Sutton because he's only been here two years. John Cullen and I have one of the best relationships in the world. I could go with him, maybe go to him with anything. We sat down and we discussed and we bounced ideas back and forth often. My main purpose on getting on that school board is to help better the goals for the school district, work with each council member that's on that school board and help them reduce the goals that we set out for the whole district. Yes, ma'am?
How does the school district have money to pay the teachers better?
We pay what's on A D A. So it's the average daily attendance. So every kid in a seat produces certain, a certain amount of money. And then, uh, T T classes get a little more, especially if you still have more students.
Surprise.
It's ba, it's base options, that's right.
And we have school taxes. We have no businesses here. Forever. And that, and that's one of the things, if we don't have the adequate water system to provide for any new businesses coming in, nor do we have the sewage to capacity for that, nor i, if this thing keeps going on where we're losing businesses downtown, we're not gonna have the money to pay for this extra stuff we want to do for the city. Therefore, the kids are gonna suffer. We're gonna have to use bottled water to flush the commode and stuff. On average, every time a child flushes that commode, that's three gallons per flush. And we can't keep doing this.
In order to pay teachers more money to recruit the teachers that are being trained, can, only thing that we can control is what, you know, as a community? Just ask them as to what they want to do.
Well, you know, it's...
Explain your ideas as a board member. What would you like us to do?
You know, they're talking about spending seven million dollars on redoing the high school gym to where they can have more power than... Not true? Can somebody explain to me? Because I got this one-on-one from a teacher.
Sorry, I did not mean to be that...
No, I mean, I want to hear it because that, that's, that's one of the precedents I got.
No, sir. It's, it's fifty thousand dollars that's out of a pot of funds that can only be spent on athletics. It has nothing to do with teacher pay.
And I understood this, uh, we discussed two years ago.
So it's allocated correctly. You have to do some money that are allocated for...
It makes you take it sales for athletics. So buy, stay, log, you know, use it for athletics.
So each, each athletic sport is separate?
We have athletic fund. Uh, and so, I'm sorry, I don't use a...
No, go ahead.
Prior to getting on the school board, I was in the same boat. I thought, why are we not spending money on school lunches but we're spending on our athletics? That does, as a parent, that didn't make sense. After educating myself and reading a book, I now understand we have limited amount of funds and I'm guessing it's just like the city.
Must be used for...
Correct. Each of those funds goes into a certain budget. You can only use it for that. And...
Grant or grant. If you put in a grant for one, if that money comes out, it has to go to that.
So the teacher pay does not come from this... So the teacher pay does not come from the same bucket as, or the gym?
Is, is that, is that what's most important as far as, are the media, do we have that sports complex?
No, I'm simply answering the question.
But that's what I'm asking is because I was dumbfounded that David Haynes asked for this two years ago. And at that time, he was told no.
He, he asked to build a building for that and that's a whole nother. Building, building, school buildings requires a bond. We don't have the bond capacity. So this is the long debated, uh, uh, meet in the middle answer that doesn't cost the district.
The other thing I understood about that was going to be in event that they change some of this up there, it would be more scholarship uh, possibility for some of the girls, some of the boys that didn't participate in football, things like that, which I can totally get by. But, I mean, you've got people that pass things through school and I want to tell you, the worst thing they could have done was add email to anybody's library. Because it gets shot from one teacher to another teacher, from campus to campus. And that, it's, for me, it's got to come from the top. Either it comes from the school board president or it's got to come from the superintendent. And I don't want to hear anybody else getting out saying, "Well, but you said this and she shouldn't have known that and then here it is, it's all way to exclude it." Yes, ma'am?
Larry, I would just like to say that as far as, as the weight room thing, you know, I'm one of those people that was like, "Why are we spending money on this?" I thought the Whitney ISD gave, gave, gave a good explanation on their post. It was a public post. It's still there. Everybody can go read it. Um, and as far as primary sources go, I'm a primary source gal. The Whitney ISD, if you, if you Google Whitney ISD board book, you go to their agendas. And their agendas, and not every district does this, I'm glad Whitney does, um, includes the attachments, several attachments, including the bids for the flooring and unlike the barricada security cameras, they have several, several comparative pricing options for that. So anybody can go to the agenda from this last meeting and pull those up and I streamed it so you can see the entire presentation if you go to that. And, and if, and anybody who misses the stream can request the audio of the meeting also directly from the school district. So this is by way of where to go to get information about that.
And, and once again, my school points about all this was the fact that the, the other thing we need to think about is the income of our community as a whole. We need to be able to set something up, whether it be at the elementary school, whether it be at the intermediate, junior high, high school. We ought to be able to turn around, like me, I, I turn around in the first few months, bring out forty-five boxes of veterans, people that are low-income subsidy, which mine is considered low-income. But there's not a reason why it is that these kids, if they need something to take home that night for dinner or if somebody needs a coat or somebody needs a new pair of shoes, we go down to a classroom that's not being used, we put it in it. And I mean, if, if anything, go to Walmart to get something donated and they'll give it to you.
That's something that the city itself and the school should work on as a donation and work in conjunction with each other. Uh, Florence has what is called Blue Center. And they, what they do is, is they take those donations of jackets, blankets, whatever throughout the year. And it's actually through the police department. That's why it's called Blue Center. And so during the winter, when people need those things, they know that they can do that. And that's something that the school district and the city can work in conjunction together.
And the federal lines.
Yeah, I was gonna say, like Whitney Municipal Alliance has, they have an application right now.
During the last three years, I've gone to a Methodist church during spring sale. They've given me all the backpacks for me to take home to the elementary school. But today I, I bought clothes at Walmart. Three bucks for a pair of jeans for a kid. So I bought four shirts. I bought, got sixty-seven dollars worth of clothes last week at the thrift store in the, uh, nurse at the elementary school because she didn't have clothes for kids. And it's something like that every year for me that I do. And I, I want them to be able to have it and have it to fall back to. But I also want other people to get involved in it. And if I have to go and beg on the internet and say, "If you've got sixty-eight size clothes" or, you know, something like that, you know, it's just something to help out. And some of us that don't have their grandkids here are not fortunate enough to see them because mine live in Louisiana. So I take care of the class that I have taught. They, every Christmas, they go home with a Christmas present. Every summer, they go home with colored books, bubbles and crayons. So, I mean, I'm in this for the long haul. I, I've lived here since, my buddy went back over to Mark and this has been my home since two thousand thirteen. And I don't plan on wanting it where I plan on making the city and the school district better. And this is my way of doing it, is running for the school board where I can help make a difference and help them reach the goals that they want for the school board. And I want this to be a premier school. My niece teaches at a school in Montgomery County. And they have premier listed on their school, just like we should have superior on our water system. And we don't have these one. Any questions? Thank y'all for y'all's time. I appreciate y'all coming. Thank you, Jason Sneeve from the school board. And I did not catch her name, but I will say. Nicole. Thank you for coming.
And for the record, we do not have a quorum of the Whitney ISD here.
That's right.
We're legally compliant. We are legally compliant.
We do not beat on the table, say you cannot address.
So by way of Zach just, just sent, just commented a statement on, in the stream. So I was gonna read it real quick. Um, "Sorry, I couldn't make it tonight, everyone, just to make a quick statement. I have a big vision for Whitney, Texas and would like to see the city prosper. We have a great community of people who I feel all want to be proud of this city. If given the chance, I will work with the council as well as city officials to make sure the city has everything it needs to meet the needs of its citizens, of our citizens. It's time that the city gets back to what's most important and that's listening to the people and finding a common ground to do what's best for everyone. We can do this by doing our due diligence to find responsible spending solutions for the budget, discontinuing unnecessary permits on private property and finding ways to ease the tax burdens our citizens face year to year. This is just to name a few of my plans. I truly believe that by working with the citizens of our community, we can truly build Whitney better together." So that's Zach. But, all right, well, thank you, Larry. But by way of what's gonna happen, Facebook is deleting live streams after thirty days. So I have tried to be, um, getting things downloaded and uploaded to a YouTube channel for archiving. But in thirty days, this video will disappear. So thanks, everybody, for coming out. And early voting starts tomorrow, April twenty-second, eight to five. And I kind of talked about that earlier, but Whitney has fourteen hundred voters and less than two hundred turn out to vote in these elections. So please let your people around you know to go vote. Thanks, guys.